Good evening and welcome to the Carlisle Regular School Board Meeting on Monday, June 25, 2018 at 6:00 PM. Mr. Bassler, would you call the roll?
Mrs. Lainhart?
Here.
Mr. Duckman?
Here.
Mr. Jewell?
Here.
Mrs. McIntosh?
Here.
Mr. Moore?
Here.
Thank you. Would everyone please rise and join me in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. At this time, we're going to move to our student and program recognition. Mr. Hook.
Thank you, Mrs. Lainhart, members of the board. I want to introduce our athletic director, Mr. John Augustine. He and along with our track coach, Eric Hodge. A wonderful person who we need to recognize tonight.
Good evening. First of all, I have two things. This is my one-year anniversary of being brought in here as your athletic director. And I just wanted to just thank you, the board, thank Mr. Bassler and Larry for your support. Thank my coaches and my staff just for a wonderful year. I've had a blast. And it was, I mean, this is, of my professional career, this has been the best. And I just, I've grown to be accepted here and to just learn what Carlisle's about. And I just love it. So, thank you very much. Second, I'd like to introduce my varsity track coach, Mr. Hodge. And he has a presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Augustine. I'd first like to thank the board and Dr. Hook for having us here to recognize a very special athlete from our program, Savannah Parish. Savannah has thrown shot put and discus for us for the past four seasons. She holds the school record in both the discus and the shot put. And she basically shattered those records. So, it says a lot about her not only abilities, but her tenacity and her work ethic as she's progressed from her freshman year, which she actually came to our program after getting cut from another sport. So, it also shows her stick-to-it-iveness to pursue something else that's a bit out of her comfort zone. So, we really appreciated having Savannah. We wish her well as she will throw for the next four seasons at Olivet Nazarene University, which is great. Anytime we can send athletes on to the next level, we always appreciate that. So, Savannah, would you come up? You don't have to say anything.
Wait a minute.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen. And it's been a real pleasure to know the last four years I've gotten to know her. And just what a pleasant person and a great competitor and a great representative for our school district. And thank you so much. And we wish you the very best. And we want to hear from you and how you're doing the next few years. Okay? Good enough. Thank you.
At this time, we will move to our visitor's comments. But if anybody would like to leave the meeting now before, you can do that. Or you can stay. It's up to you. All right. We are in visitor's comments now. If anybody would like to come up and say something, you may state your name and address and give us a reason why you're here. If not, then we are going to move on to the treasurer's report. Mr. Bassler?
Thank you, Mrs. Lainhart. I'll go right ahead and get started with our action items for the month. First, I need approval for the minutes for the last regularly scheduled board meeting on May 21st.
Do I have a motion? Motion by Mr. Jewell. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. McIntosh. If there are no questions, you may call the roll.
Mr. Jewell?
Yes.
Mrs. McIntosh?
Yes.
Mrs. Lainhart?
Yes.
Mr. Duckman?
Yes.
And Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carried.
Next is the financial report that was part of your packet. Unbelievably getting ready to close out another fiscal year. Working on that currently as we speak. Again, I sound like a broker record. Maybe I'm boring, but no real surprises. Everything is working out. Just trying to get all the accounts all settled up, get all the bills paid, and be ready to close it out by June 30th.
We'd like more.
Yes, we do.
Right, at this time, we would need a motion.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Moore. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Duckman. If there's no questions, you may call the roll.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Duckman?
Yes.
Mrs. Lainhart?
Yes.
Mr. Jewell?
Yes.
Mrs. McIntosh?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carried.
Next, I just need your approval to post all the adjustments and be able to close the books for fiscal year end 2018.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Moore. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Jewell. If you don't have any questions, you may call the roll.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Jewell?
Yes.
Mrs. McIntosh?
Yes.
Mr. Duckman?
Yes.
And Mrs. Lainhart?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carried.
Next is a temporary appropriations for next fiscal year 1819. As we finish up closing out the books at the end, then we need to have a budget in place to begin purchasing stuff for the next year. And again, we do a temporary budget to get us started. And then I will bring the permanent appropriations to the September board meeting.
Okay. If we don't have any questions, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Jewell. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. McIntosh. All right, you may call the roll.
Mr. Jewell?
Yes.
Mrs. McIntosh?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Duckman?
Yes.
Mrs. Lainhart?
Yes. Thank you. Motion carried.
Next is the supplemental appropriations in getting ready to close out the accounts. I had to increase a couple of, not general fund, but a couple of the student activity accounts to kind of clean them up a little bit. Money was there, just had to increase the appropriation, which means that they brought in more money and spent more money than we anticipated. But the good news is the money they brought in was greater than what they spent. So, that's the main thing. Yes.
All right. I need a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Moore. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Jewell. Any questions? If not, you may call the roll.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Jewell?
Yes.
Mrs. Lainhart?
Yes.
Mrs. McIntosh?
Yes.
And Mr. Duckman?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carried.
And then finally for me, as we do on an annual basis, award our property liability and fleet insurance through the Southwestern Ohio EPC Insurance Pool for the 1819 school year.
All right. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Jewell. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. McIntosh. Any questions? You may call the roll.
Mr. Jewell?
Yes.
Mrs. McIntosh?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mrs. Lainhart?
Yes.
And Mr. Duckman?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carried.
Thank you. That is my report for the month.
Thank you. At this time, we'll move to the superintendent's report. Mr. Hook.
Thank you again. Mrs. Lainhart, members of the board. I brought a couple of our lead people in tonight to kind of give us a little bit better update. I know I've been trying to give you those updates and we keep those posted on the website. But I've asked Pete Becker from Skanska Megan, our construction manager, lead person on that, and Nick Cristofaro from SHP, our architectural firm, also our lead architects, and have a little presentation. So, while we're moving up and getting things ready, if the board wants to replace that seat, we'll get everything ready for you.
All right. Well, thanks for giving us a little bit of your time this evening. Really wanted to give the community and the board a little update where we're at. You know, Nick is representing the SHP team. They sort of show you some pictures of sort of how the design concepts are going. And I'm representing some information kind of stuff from the construction management side. So, with that, I'm going to turn it over. Really, there's a little bit of an agenda. We like to typically follow through with kind of updates as the projects go from today all the way through when we break ground and then when we get the building going and when we finish. So, it's sort of the same kind of process, you know, however often updates are asked for, we like to present as a group, sometimes depending on schedules one or the other. We like to go through, Nick will go through a design update, short concepts. I'll talk about some important news, where we are in budget and the timeline. So, with that, I'm going to turn it over to Nick to sort of show you some wow. This stuff's fun. My stuff's boring.
Thank you very much. And thanks for the opportunity to give an update tonight. About two weeks ago, the design team presented an update to the core team that represented roughly where we were at about halfway through the design development phase of the project. I'm going to hit on a few highlights of that presentation, which focused largely on the development of the look and feel of the exterior of the project and some things about, some things that we're incorporating, some concepts we're incorporating into the plan itself. So, we started the design process with an emphasis on incorporating the history and legacy into the project and what role that would play as the project continued to move forward. So, initially started talking about it as, you know, how do we find places for things? Do we do a history wall? So, we kind of latched on to the idea of a history wall. And then we expanded that a little further to the idea of a kind of what we were calling a history walk. So, what you experience, well, back up a second, the two orange arrows, those are the main high school entry on the left and the main elementary school entry on the right. And so, we thought the concept is that we would start this kind of beginning of history walk at one of those entries. And then as you move into the major spaces of the building, you walk by this presentation of history graphics and photographs and objects till you get to kind of the main, your student dinings, which are left and right, the red spaces. And then we would continue that around the connection between those two spaces and then back around to the entry. So, we thought it would be most impactful to incorporate those elements into the everyday experience of the building. Oh, and I was also going to point out, like, at the auditorium entries, we're incorporating the limestone entries from the Chamberlain Gymnasium entry at those areas. So, overall, you know, just making it part of how people, making it an important part of how people use the building. And this is the second floor, so you kind of see how the building has some two-story spaces and you'll get a lot of play in the volumes between the floors. The overall layout of the building creates a series of defined exterior spaces, some of them more public, some of them more private and enclosed for, protected for exterior learning or outdoor learning. The wings, the classroom wings of the building, so the high school classroom wing is on the north, the elementary classroom is on the south. And how they extend a little bit, they kind of create three sides to that kind of front lawn, front yard. And it's starting to create like almost kind of a quad effect. You get some of those characteristics reading from the enclosed three sides. So, it's kind of a public space with a more formal feeling, which doesn't show up quite as well, but it shows up pretty well in the plans. We're creating a completely enclosed courtyard for the pre-K, kindergarten and pre-kindergarten. In between kind of the main body of the building, where the student dining and auditorium are, there's a play space for the elementary school that's protected and no traffic or anything comes through there. So, it's a very nice place to be. And then on the north side, in between the high school wing and again, the main body of the building, we're creating a space that has, that we're calling like, it's a concourse or we call it the concourse. It's more of a connection between that main parking lot and the stadium. Creates a connection visually and there's a little bit, I have a picture of it later and I'll be able to talk through it a little more. Did I skip two?
Yeah, you bumped it hard.
Yep. Hard bump. Okay. So, we want to create, this is the main high school entry. We want to create entries that are inviting and welcoming and easily recognizable as entries. We wanted to make sure that they're protected as well from the elements. So, what we have is an entry that's a little more recessed. So, you have a nice overhang that's protected. And it's also protected from the side because it is a west face. So, throughout a large portion of the day, it's going to avoid direct sunlight because we do want to use a lot of glass. The glass makes it inviting when you can see through it. And then at night, when it's in reverse and all the light's coming out of it, it should have a very welcoming, welcoming appeal to it. The kind of lower one-story section that you're seeing up there, that is, that's the administration area. And then the administration and board are kind of together in that suite. But the idea there is that you have a glassy, open administration area that is, has visual control over the approach to the building. We're also going to develop, as part of the signage package for this, we want to develop, there's a lot of opportunities to create a main entry sign for the building at this point as well, whether it's on the building or part of the landscape. That comes as part of, as the design continues to develop through this phase. And this is the main elementary school entrance, a very similar language to the first one, similar elements. We want them to be unique, but this one is just a little bit smaller. So, there's a little bit of hierarchy that says, okay, this one over here, that's the main one. It's a lot of the same ideas. And this is the concourse. You're looking west towards Jamaica Road. We want the building to be part of the experience of the approach to the stadium, the constraints of the site and how it's laying out. It potentially, you know, it potentially blocked the main entry to the stadium. So, make the experience of getting to the stadium, make the experience of moving through the building part of getting to the stadium. And this is what we're looking at for the extended learning areas. This is the elementary school wing. We've extended coverage over a little bit of area on the outside. It extends the functionality of those spaces, those extended learning area spaces. We are showing a little more glass here than what we expect to be in the final design. We've had long conversations with Pete and his team about that and we've come to a good reconciliation on that. And then the other thing that we want to try to do is incorporate not just the physical elements of the history, but we also want to bring forward some of the design strategies from the existing buildings on the campus. Especially in Chamberlain, you see a strategy that they call the base middle top. It establishes a strong visual presence at the ground plane. And that's the three brick bands you see growing across the bottom. And then above that, there's kind of a field of brick. And then you see the bands coming across the top. So, it creates a visual effect of having three pieces to the elevation. And breaking an elevation that's on a pretty big building down into parts makes it more relatable from a human scale. I wanted to also zoom in and show you kind of some of the details. Because the other thing that kind of gets you into that, I want to say, historical, traditional work here is that, is the brickwork. So, we're doing some things with the brickwork that kind of reference, that kind of level of craftsmanship that the old buildings had. We're projecting a few of those bands and they'll create a nice little shadow line. And then we're recessing some others and changing the way the bricks are stacked together to create a different effect where we want some contrast. The contrasting colors of brick will also help visually make the building more relatable. And we haven't settled on a brick color. The images I showed are conceptual. It's a very, they're kind of non-committal to a specific color of brick. So, what we'll do throughout the process is we'll bring in real samples of bricks and we'll put them side by side with samples of metal so that we're bringing the whole composition together at the same time and reviewing it at once. So, yeah, I think that's what I had for my update on the design. I'm happy to field any questions. I know I moved-
We'll go through the rest of it.
What's that?
Yeah, we'll go through the rest of it and then we'll have Q and A towards the end. And then, real quick, you know, the second thing on the agenda is like important news, right? So, right now, tonight for approval is the schematic design deliverable. What I will tell you is real high level, it's on budget, right? We're on budget. I think second thumb's on time, right? So, we're on schedule and we're on budget. You know, right now, we're moving forward with the design development phase. So, Nick was talking about, we're starting to, okay, maybe we got all this glass, but the budget affords, you know, maybe 10 feet shorter kind of stuff. So, we're spending a lot of collaboration time there. Really, the critical thing today is the pace that what we're, this team is moving. We came onboard right after the first of the year. You know, we had a lot of meetings. I mean, what you don't see is all the front game work, right? It's all the administrative meetings, the two or three design team meetings, sometimes three a week. We got an outlook schedule that says Carlisle, 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 Carlisle. And Larry's been really good and Dan have been really good about, you know, breaking up time and working with the staff and administration to help meet those schedules because it is an aggressive design schedule. I will tell you, it's going extremely well. There's been great collaboration. You know, we've participated in community input meetings with Larry and a lot of the board members and staff and administration because really that's, it's making sure the community's part of it. And Larry and Dan are doing a great job sort of spearheading that. So, and then these guys, the SHP team is doing a really good job taking that input from all those sessions and all those meetings and trying to really make sure we get a lot of that in the building. We're going to break ground this summer in 18, so that's it for the news. Budget, you know, originally, you know, we break down the project budget that's in the estimate. We have the demolition. We have the co-funded K-12 and then the additional LFI pieces that are captured. So, right now, overall, we're just a little bit under the budget on the K-12 project, but that's a good thing, right? Typically, we like to, and we do have design contingency in there, which we may use a little bit of that to deal with this thing called the tariff that you're hearing a lot of talk about. So, there's a pretty nice chunk of money set aside to sort of protect the project for scope growth from just tweaking the design as well as, you know, we can't control things like if the aluminum and steel prices are going to go up 3% or 4% in the next couple quarters. So, the bottom lines, we're on budget. Tonight, we're going to bring that deliverable for a resolution here when we're done. And that's been, it's been a great, great process. Timeline for the new K-12, we're going to complete the design development stage in early August. With that, usually that locks the building in, in a pretty good location. It says, okay, the footprint's this big. We finally feel like we're pretty dialed in. Nick and his team, we've had meetings with civil engineers, soil kind of people, local municipalities, and really designing it in and figuring out how close can we build to the old high school. You know, there's a big electric service out here that we got to be careful we don't whack so we don't knock the power out all the time when we're digging. So, that's really where we're tweaking that and making sure we're ready to go. Because what you don't want to do is you don't want to break ground and then have the building still moving around a little bit because that just gets expensive. We're going to start work in August of 18. We get the GMP. We're going to bring an early site package, GMP in August, the DD estimate in August, reconciled in August. So, we're really going to meet our schedule for starting this summer. Then we'll come out with a foundation package, usually a little farther past, a little, a month or two after that. And then construction documents are wrapping up in October of 2018, late October, early November timeline. And what that usually means is we're able to bid it, put a GMP on the building, the structure, all the interior pieces. And then that part of the project will start in January 19. I got a bad date there. We're getting started a year early.
The GMP, by the way, is-
A GMP is a guaranteed max price. That's when we say-
That's a critical number.
We wrap it up, put a bow on it and say, hey, we're on budget and here it is. So, that's exciting. And I'm starting to hear-
There's a whole nother realm of acronyms.
Yeah. Sorry about that. So, with that, you know, that's our quick update. We just want to really thank the district, the board, and then really the community for supporting this project. And it's been exciting. And this is just a picture of what we do when we do start construction. So, it's been, it's been an exciting, exciting time here. With that, any questions?
Groundbreaking here is going to be this summer.
Yeah, we want to make sure, let's see, I got a picture in here of what we'd like to make it because it's a big event. It's in the background. I thought I had one in there. I could've swore I had one in there. Maybe not. It doesn't show up. So, what we like to do is we like to make sure that when we're breaking ground, we really are in a position to be breaking ground, you know? I don't, we don't want to have it and then, you know, you have a little pile of dirt and some tonka trucks behind there. We like to give it a wow factor. We want to have the kids in session, the staff and administration. You know, we want the board members and the public to be able to, you know, most people are cramming vacations in. So, typically, late summer, August timeframe, hopefully right when we're in school, maybe a week or so. Then we'll schedule the groundbreaking when we get all the big equipment on site. And, you know, it's just, the sooner we get through DD and get the GMP for the early site, then it's, this summer, kind of August of 2018, we'd like to have all the big giant equipment out there. And it's a community event. It's a, I mean, the last, the last ones I just did down the street, we probably had 100, 200 people at one of the groundbreaking events. And kids were there, we had constituents, and it was really exciting. So, that's the summer.
As we push into August, we'll have a real good handle then on DD. Right now, definitively, we have that scheduled to be complete by the 10th of August. And so, you're getting in down into the weeds now from the construction and design and all that kind of stuff. So, from there, that will allow us to really project a little more accurately, you know? But, once we get the kids here on the 22nd, they're just going to be shortly thereafter. So, it just depends again how, August is pretty critical for us.
Yeah, we got a lot of utility flipping we got to do over on the, to keep the building, the feeds going for the football stadium, you know? Right now, they're going right through where the building's at. You know, we got to move all that stuff over. So, we got to flip it all over that way. We got to flip it to the north, you know, put fences up, keep that access drive into the parking lot back here open and the drive to the stadium. Put a new temporary road in around to get to the stadium. And then once we have all that done, then we can close the gates off on the fence and start moving big piles of dirt. So-
Be careful, don't mess with football.
Oh, we will not mess with football. Yeah. I, I'm a, I'm a big football fan, so problem is my team keeps losing and we don't get to the playoffs, but-
Oh, you're a Cleveland fan?
No, no. Bengals fan, so. Yeah. Same as a Cleveland fan, I guess. Where's Chad at? Isn't he a big Cleveland?
Oh, I'm a Cleveland fan, so I understand.
You guys actually got a promising year this summer, this year, I think. But, no, we're going to, we're good at building and disrupting, but we're very conscious of, you know, keeping your activities going, you know, not making a complete mess. And, but the most important thing right now is making sure we got the budget. Budget, you know, we got everything, the programming, and then putting protectors in the plan to say, okay, you know, let's make this an alternate, you know, just to help protect the budget. Because, you know, it's a, it's a hot market out there right now. We're actually, we've been talking to some major contractors on most of our bid packages, say, hey, I got, we have Carlisle coming up, you know, I want to make sure you're in, you know? And we're keeping a pulse on the other work in the market because we want these guys invested into this job and not necessarily the job up the street or the job over in Mason, kind of stuff like that. So, it's been, it's been very, very productive so far. And it's been fun working with this district and administration and team.
Do you have any questions? This is for you.
Thank you.
It's good.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyway, thank you for, feet and to neck for coming in and making time to share the There's a lot going on right now, too. So, like they talked about, changing electricities, redoing a lot of running. So, there's a lot of activity. If you look down to the northeast corner, you can see that now they have completely scraped the new softball facility because the building's going to be on top of the current one. So, we got to get that one ready to go, to be actually used this coming spring. So, there's a lot of activity you'll see in the far corner as we move forward, as well as an access road that at some point, we're going to talk about here, too, in a moment, that we'll need to access back there at a parking lot back in that, back in the cornfield. So, it's moving along at really a great speed, so. Thank you, fellows.
Thank you.
Thank you.
With that, I can move it- With that, I can move into my action items under general business. Need approval for these, and just to reiterate, at least, item 1A is, is the SD deliverables, which we talked about, are in your packet. We also need approval to accept the bid for access roads that's in excess of $50,000. We're still in that process of pulling all those bids in, and we'll move forward once that's approved. Everything else on here is normal stuff, so I need approval for items 1A through J.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Moore, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Jewell. If there's no questions, you may call the roll.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Jewell?
Yes.
Mr. Dunkman?
Yes.
Mrs. Lanhardt?
Yes.
Mrs. McIntosh?
Yes.
Thank you, motion carried.
Item 2A, need approval, it's accepted STRS disability retirement for Shane, effective May 31.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Dunkman, is there a second? Second by Mr. Jewell. If there's no questions, you may call the roll.
Mr. Dunkman?
Yes.
Mr. Jewell?
Yes.
Mrs. Lanhardt?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mrs. McIntosh?
Yes, thank you, motion carried.
Item 3, under administrative employment, need approval, and you have a chance, I'm going to go down through these. A, Kim Perkins, Kim will be our new director of special education under a two-year contract. Kim comes to us as the now former, well, she's still there until, until she comes here in August. She is currently the special ed supervisor at Springboro City School District, has been there for four years, brings a wealth of experience in the special ed world, and we're excited to have Kim Perkins on our side. And B, also approval is Jennifer Dear Wester, Jennifer is here. She will assume the role of principal at Grigsby, her two-year contract as well. Jennifer comes to us from Dayton Public School System, has both a teacher and a head principal, did a wonderful job in that setting, and we're excited that she's coming to Grigsby. Also, Bruce Terry is up for a contract renewal, effective August 1st, it'd be his three-year contract renewal, and then item C, so I need approval for A through C.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Moore, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Jewell. If there's no questions, you may call the roll.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Jewell?
Yes.
Mrs. McIntosh?
Yes.
Mr. Dunkman?
Yes.
And Mrs. Lanhardt?
Yes, thank you, motion carried.
Item 4, under certified employment, oh, congratulations, by the way, you two...
Too late to turn back now.
You're all good. Welcome aboard, you're now officially Indians. Item 4, under certified employment, need approval for the two, two additional teach, not additional, these are replacement, Ben Schooler at the high school, science teacher replacing Scotty Davis, who's going to go to the Rocky Mountain area, and I guess when you're young, we can do that stuff, so. Good for him, we wish him well. And Jamie McQueen, our halftime preschool teacher.
All right, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Jewell, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. McIntosh. If there's no questions, you may call the roll.
Mr. Jewell?
Yes.
Mrs. McIntosh?
Yes.
Mrs. Lanhardt?
Yes.
Mr. Dunkman?
Yes.
And Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Thank you, motion carried.
And item number 5, under classified employment, some were retroactive, but just summer help kind of things, need approval for items A through E.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Moore, second by Mr. Jewell. If there's no questions, you may call the roll.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Jewell?
Yes.
Mr. Dunkman?
Yes.
Mrs. Lanhardt?
Yes.
And Mrs. McIntosh?
Yes, thank you, motion carried.
As you can see, this is not a off time for us. We are usually done by now, so sorry. Item 6, under supplemental resignations, again, these are, we're just kind of clearing things up as we move into next fall, so I need approval for items A through D.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Dunkman, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Moore, if there's no questions, you may call the roll.
Mr. Dunkman?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mrs. Lanhardt?
Yes.
Mr. Jewell?
Yes.
Mrs. McIntosh?
Yes, thank you, motion carried.
Number 7, under supplemental employment, we've got a plethora of, of employment here, items A through JJ, running out of letters, so. Everything, all coaches, bands, mentoring for new teachers, et cetera, AV coordinators, et cetera. So we're processing all of those, I need approval for those.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Jewell, second by Mr. Moore. If there's no questions, you may call the roll.
Mr. Jewell?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mrs. McIntosh?
Yes.
Mr. Dunkman?
Yes.
Mrs. Lanhardt?
Yes.
Thank you, motion carried.
Let me get down.
At this time, we will move to Board of Education. Do we have a legislative report?
The most exciting thing I can bring is that the state did appoint a Speaker of the House, and they voted, and everything went our way on that, the legislation that we were really worried about there, so we, we, we'll count that as a victory at this point in time.
We've done everything that we can do, we've got, Congress did what they needed to do. The amended, amended House Bill 21 is sitting on the governor's desk, and so he's got 10 days to sign it or it becomes a law. If he signs it, it becomes a law. I called the governor's office today, you know, give me something here, and so, there is a bill signing scheduled for tomorrow.
Tomorrow.
He just didn't know what ones were on the docket, so, of course, you know, I got as close as I could get to that one, so. All I know is it's on his desk and the clock is ticking, so that's a positive thing for us.
All right, there is no CTC report for this month, and is there any old business? Any new business? All right, I would just like to say congratulations to our new hires, we're looking forward to a, a new year, so lots of exciting things going on, so glad that you're a part of it, so. And at this point, if we don't have any other business, we need an executive session for the personnel, we're doing the superintendent's evaluation, so, and the time is...
We got a vote on it first.
Oh, yeah, we got a vote on it. You know what, I forgot about that, sorry. Go ahead, yeah, we're just moving right along.
Put your vote there, partner.
Mr. Jewell makes the first, who makes the second?
I'll second.
All right, let's just call the roll.
Mr. Jewell?
Yes.
Mrs. McIntosh?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Dunkman?
Yep.
Mrs. Lanhardt?
Yes, thank you.
6:41.